When I first started, I didn't see that one up there. I'm looking at the one back there and I'm like, how do you guys even know what time it is? And they're like, it's up there. And I'm like, that's right, twice a day though. You got a couple of them? One gosy battery is like crazy.
When I worked at the nursing home, if you worked night shift on daylight savings time, that was a chore. Because you had to change 50 clocks.
Yeah. These new ones that are atomic or whatever, those are the ticket there.
Yeah. Because you don't want to confuse the people with their, because they're so timely, you know, most of them.
I could see that.
Yeah, you want it like, you don't want them to panic and wake up in their own time.
Think they're an hour late.
Yeah, for breakfast, or bingo.
Bingo, yeah. I worked in the nursing home, I know what you're talking about. All right, everybody ready?
Yep.
All right, 7:30 has arrived. I'll call this meeting to order. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Terry Wykam.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger. Councilmember Daryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelof. Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Councilman Wells?
I move to approve the August 20th, 2024 city council agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the August 20th, 2024 city council agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
I haven't gotten it yet.
I've logged in. How would you like to vote, Councilwoman Gardner?
Um, yeah.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with five yeses.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the city consent agenda August 20th, 2024 as presented.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the city council agenda for August 20th, 2024, consent agenda, I'm sorry, August 20, 2024 as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
I got logged out. Just a second.
No.
See if it'll work this time. There it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Online voting has closed. The motion passes with five yeses.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is a public hearing. This, and I will open this public hearing. It's concerning an ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations, Section 5.08, Alcoholic Beverages, to add Section 5.08.580, General Penalties for Violations. Is there anybody here that would like to speak at this public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to the next thing on the agenda, which is public comment. Public comment is a time set aside by Resolution Number 2C-1996. It's for the public to comment. There's a time limit of five minutes for anything that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody here that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to the next thing on our agenda, which is the Community Builder Award for August 2024. And I will turn the floor over to the City of Rollins Volunteer Committee.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the Community Builder Award is a monthly award the city presents to local individuals, businesses, and organizations for their volunteer service, sponsorship, promotion, and programs and events, outstanding service in the interest of the city, and for other contributions significant to the Rollins quality of life. The volunteer committee would like to present August 2024 Community Builder Award to Mary Oakes.
Um, okay. Mary Oakes moved here 47 years ago, and the first thing she noticed was how friendly everyone was. The people here were very welcoming. The town was booming with vibrant downtown shops full of... Nope, I'm gonna start over, sorry. The town was booming with a vibrant downtown, full of shops, parks, and restaurants. She appreciated it then and appreciates now the businesses that we do have and the great schools and activities for our youngsters. She was raised to be kind and helpful when she can. This progressed into becoming a good citizen and positive influence. Mary was nominated for her dedication to picking up trash around the community throughout the year, but she also helps with other projects and various organizations as needed. To quote Mary, "Compared to the other people that have won this award, my actions are more behind the scenes. When I see something needs to be done, I try to quietly do so. I like the personal satisfaction of getting it done." In Mary's opinion, the key to creating a vibrant, connected, and engaged community would be to hold community discussions. These discussions can be to see more of what the community wants and if they're willing to help organize it. She hopes that a community, as a community, we can unite and all work together to solve our problems. She is hoping to see more community cleanups and involve the kids more with their clubs and schools. Mary is most proud that even though she wishes she could have done more, she is proud that she can still get it out and make a difference. Thank you, Mary. Oh, sorry.
I just want to thank everyone that, you know, voted for me or whatever, recommended that I get this award. I'm just really happy what I can do things and I don't know that I am quite up there with the leg of people that have received this award, but I'm very grateful and I hope to continue to do things.
Thank you, Mary, for what you've done. You're awesome.
Thanks.
Also, Mary's donating her $100 to Pet Partners. Thank you, Mary.
You've helped me so much for my time.
Thanks, Mary. That's well deserved. All right. The next thing on our agenda is a Planning and Zoning Commission resignation. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to accept Cheryl Bailey's resignation from the Planning and Zoning Commission effective immediately and direct community relations to advertise the vacancy.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to accept Cheryl Bailey's resignation from the Planning and Zoning Commission effective immediately and direct community relations to advertise the vacancy. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with five yeses.
Okay, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the city council reports and ward updates. The first one is Carbon County Council of Government and Ward 1 by me, myself. And the last COG meeting that we had was in Sinclair, and we had an update from YDOT about all the projects that are going on, not only in our town and the ones that are anticipated in our town, but around the county, all the different roads that they're working on and such like that. It was quite a lengthy report. They've got just a lot going on in the way of YDOT, and it's much appreciated. The other thing that came up was that the bylaws are need adjusting. They, the bylaws state that there'll be an election in July, and with, it doesn't align with the elections. And I'll give you an example. One of the kids, well, he's kidding me, sitting beside me from Sinclair, he just earlier said that he wouldn't mind being an officer in COG, but he didn't want to run for that position because he wasn't sure he was going to make the election, which would cause chaos at the end of the year. And so there was talk about what to do about that, and it was suggested that we change the bylaws to coincide with the election. So in other words, late December, early January, after the general election, so we know who is going to be in office and such. And so at the next meeting, which is in September, in...
The BAGs?
No, I think it's in Medicine Bow or Hannah. I don't know. I'll make sure you all know by then. But that's when the bylaws will be addressed with that change, because it just doesn't make sense to have it in the middle of the year. That has been that way forever, and it's been questioned many, many times, and it's just really time to change that. And as far as Ward 1 updates, there really isn't anything I have to report. So we'll move on. Tom, did I cover that pretty well? You were at that meeting? Okay. The next one is Councilman Seelof, which he is not here. The next one is Urban Systems Committee and Ward 2 updates. Councilman Garner?
I have no updates.
Okay, thank you. Ward 2 update, Councilmember Lumen?
I know we all got an email from a person who was concerned about the trash in somebody's yard. Just want to remind people that we do have ordinances against the buildup of trash and weeds in people's yards. Those ordinances are in place. But we also have one code enforcer, and we have a very small police force that is continually looking for more people. But they have priorities of taking care of, you know, violent things and that type of thing. Code enforcement tends to be low on that priority list. It's not that it's not a priority to us, because we have the ordinances in place. And they're not only there for people's yards to look good, for our town to look good, but they're also there for safety. We don't want anything like a fire. Those type of things would cause major problems. I would just encourage the public that if they do see something like that, let the police know and have patience with them as they work through those complaints to get everybody in line. They don't just show up at your door and give you a ticket. They do give warnings first, let people know what is needed, what is required of our ordinances, give people those opportunities to clean it up on their own. I just wanted to let the public know, to let the police know and have patience. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. The next one is Rollins Planning Commission and Ward 3 update. Councilmember Weisenberg?
We had a planning and zoning meeting last Tuesday. There were several items on the agenda there. There was a special use permit for a rehabilitation, I guess. It was actually denied due to the fact that it does not fit our codes of what would be allowed in that, for a special use permit. So, you know, the city did their due justice in allowing them to come and have due process and that. So I want to say thank you for that and allowing that to happen. There's stuff that's coming up, and obviously we have a special meeting coming up on the 30th. The BLM come and asked for a zone change on some property there. They were, it passed unanimously, I believe, for the BLM, minus one parcel that was a little section over kind of by the hill over here by the railroad tracks. We took that out due to possible spot zoning, stuff like that. So, and then the special use permit for the barracks was actually passed also. So I would look forward to the BLM building a barracks and fire station shortly if council passes that. It was recommended by the planning and zoning for that. So, and then the city actually put the property off of Higley Boulevard, I believe, or Donnell Street, between the two, and Jackson right there, and asked for a zone change also from a R 7.5 to a C 2 zone. It's been an R 7.5 for many and many years. No developments ever happened there. This could offer different development, tax revenues, stuff like that. So there's some different legalities, and maybe Panita can touch base on that with the way that went, happened. It was not unanimous. It passed with two nays on there. But because there's a petition out, there's, you have to have so many votes when it comes to council to actually pass. I believe I'll have Panita touch base on that if she would. But other than that, I mean, it's still coming forward and be recommended. So I'd imagine that'll be on the next council meeting. So, I think that's about it.
All right, thank you.
I guess the ward, ward update is, we do have a property in our ward up there that is very serious. I've taken the city manager out, showed him. There's clear violations of ordinances that we need to get enforced. And I understand we're short-staffed and stuff like that, but this is a property that needs to be enforced on as soon as possible, right? The other thing is with this property, I don't know necessarily if the people have the means to pay for, you know, the removal of the stuff in their property. But I would encourage the city employees that go and talk to these individuals or whatever to relay that there is a possibility of possible fee waivers if they need help. You know, they would have to come and ask for a fee waiver, of a landfill fee waiver or such from the council. But I would encourage them to do that, and maybe the council could agree upon something to help these individuals out or something too, if necessary. So, that's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wells?
Yes, Tanya covered most of what I was going to talk about, but I did want to shout out to the staff that were clearing the walkway. It's really nice to be able to run and not be worried about snakes coming out of those weeds. So I do appreciate the staff that were out there cleaning the walkway for us. That's it.
All right. The next thing on our agenda is the Rollins Carbon County Airport Board update to council. And I will turn it over, turn the floor over to the Carbon County Airport Board or their representative in this case, I guess. Are you alone?
I seem to be alone, yes.
Well, thank you for being here.
Honorable Mayor, council members, so we're proceeding. We're just, we just finished building in addition to the terminal building. Right now, its function is basically a 24-hour rest stop, if you will, for GA, general aircraft traffic. It's open 24/7 from the airport side. They are able to use the restroom. There's a lounge area for fixing a meal and the like, and they also, there is the, we don't have it furnished yet, but there's a possibility that they can have a, take a nap, if you will. There's a room set aside for that. I encourage you to come by and check it out. It's open most days of the week. We've asked the airport manager to lock up the public side door when he's not in, not on site. But generally, Monday through Friday, if Bob's around, or if you can access it from the airport side, I encourage you to take a tour of it. Our, we have quite a few members that will be, at least two that will be attending the state small airport forum or conference in Saratoga next month. And our next, our next, our upcoming projects, we are diligently plotting to install an off-hours fueling system for general aviation to, one, to provide some income back, income, self-supporting income for the airport and provide off-hours fueling capabilities for the general public, if you will.
I just have a couple of questions. Are all, the, the Airport Board is in control of several hangars. Are they all rented at this time?
Currently, all of our T-hangers are currently rented, yes.
All right. I guess that's good and, good and bad, because it limits growth, but it helps on the fee side.
Yep, it does indeed. We are working to restructure our lease fees for the private hangars on the, on the property. That's still been, it's been a two or three-year effort here to try to restructure the fees and not run everybody off. For the longest time, the lease for the land that the hangar sit on was $100 a year. That seems, seems to be not equitable, if you will, because we have hangars that range in size from 1,000 square feet to 3,000 square feet. It's the same, same fee, so we're working to restructure that.
It's tough, as long as some of those people have been there, but I think it's necessary. I just have one other question, and I know that the FAA is getting tougher on airports to, like in hangars, they're for airplanes, and there are things that are not airplanes in those hangars and stuff. Are, is that being addressed at all?
Well, as far as enforcement, we, it's, it's sticky ground, right? We state clearly in our lease, the lease agreements that exist, that they, it has to be aviation-related in the hangar. There is no living in the hangars, that type of thing. However, we, it's, we almost need a warrant to access their building. They own the building, even though we own the land under it. So it's, it's kind of a sticky widget, if you will, to enforce that. We try to ensure that, we reiterate when they rent a hangar that it's for aviation only. Short of the city hangars, we really, the T-hangers, we really don't have a cause or, or, I guess, we're not able to search them at will, I guess.
Sure, don't have the right. How many T-hangers are left? A lot of them got torn down, correct?
So we did tear down several. Again, this is, I'm going off memory, going off what I've been told.
It's been a while back, too.
There were several T-hangers torn down. We have, the new building we put in place of those has five hangars. our, the new building we put in place of those has five hangars uh currently.
Are there a lot of T-hangers left?
No, the 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 five, all five are currently rented.
No, I mean, left standing? The old type T-hangers?
There is one currently left standing, I believe.
Okay. I just, I just was curious. Um I appreciate your hard work on on that board. It's 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 important to our community to have a, our airport operational and and keep up on all the catalogs of rules and regulations and whatnot. So I definitely appreciate your work. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Um Myra has some cards there of appreciation from the council and staff to your board for all of your hard work and pass it on to uh the other board members. We do appreciate what you all do.
Uh thank you. I'll pass these along.
Yep. All right. The next thing on the agenda is uh uh city manager and staff reports. And Tom, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council. Um to start off tonight, we have a special staff recognition that we would like to recognize. Um Officer Colton Hallissey has completed the Wyoming Law Enforcement Academy's Peace Office Basic Course up in Douglas. And what is special about this is that he received the prestigious Honor Graduate Award up there. And and this award is the highest honor bestowed on an officer while attending the Peace Officer Basic Course. Uh the award is selected by the Wyoming Law Enforcement Academy Instructional Staff who honors one officer in each class for performing in a superior manner in all phases of training and who exhibited all the essential qualities and attributes of uh professional peace office. And so if you happen to see him, you may uh congratulate him on that award. That's a very prestigious award, and we are so proud to have him in the Rollins Police Department. Um as Councilman Weisenberg alluded to, we will be holding a special council meeting on August thirtieth. And what this is for is from the zoning of the BLM property. And um this meeting will be held at eleven AM in in the morning. And the main reason for this is, is that um the BLM grant has to be encumbered by August thirty-first. And we have to advertise our um the the zone change by ordinance fifteen days in advance. So we got it in the the Rollins Times on their website. And the fifteen days came down to August thirtieth. And so that is the reason for the special council meeting. A couple updates on our water. Um currently, our water flows are stable at about two point three million gallons per day. And so our tank levels are holding. And so there is no need for restrictions at at this time. Um and it looks as if we may make it through our season this year without the restrictions. And so that is good news. Our water master plan should be coming out probably by the end of this month. And um this is key to our strategy as to how we we will look at the rehabilitation of the water transmission line. Within there, it will outline the the different projects that we will need to do and potential funding sources. So once we have that report finalized, we feel that we will start to move quickly in funding sources and in contracts and all those those different um items that affect our our water line. The SCADA contract has been complete and signed off on, and a notice to proceed has been signed. We will have a pre-construction meeting set for August twenty-second. And SCADA i- is funded through the WCBA or the Community Development Block Grant. And so we will have WCBA representatives here at that point for that um pre-construction meeting. The Sage Creek Springs rehabilitation, the design contract is being finalized. We are very close on that. And a design kickoff, we're hoping to have by the end of this month, by the end of August on that. And as you know, this is our ARPA three monies that we received through the slipboard. There will be this Saturday at the gun range, a free site-in day, so as hunting season is upon us. Then the next few months, you can be able to come out and site in your your rifles and those things at the uh gun range, which is at twenty-two oh one East Gun Club Road. And the last thing to to note is that the RFQP four brown field has been issued. It is being advertised. And we have had two firms that have already inquired on that. So that is good news. Uh those are due back to the city by September twelfth on those. And then we will bring that to council for approval at that time. So that's my report.
Pretty good news. Thank you. Uh anybody have any questions on that report? All right, we'll move to the next thing, a city attorney report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council. Uh follow-up on Councilor Weisenberg's uh comments regarding the city rezone. The city has a parcel of land located on the south side. It is in a little wedge of land in between the Highway seventy and the residential area off of Donnell and Jackson and, no, Jackson and Donnell. And it is an area encompassing about nineteen acres. And it is sandwiched in between the BLM land. And so the, to also follow up on the BLM matter, the reason that BLM was seeking a rezone is because it is building a fire, seeks to build a fire station and barracks. Under current ordinances and zoning codes, that area of land is an R seven five and does not permit, even under special use permit, to build any uh emergency services. However, a C two zone does. And the reason, so that's the reason for that change. BLM has no plans to do anything with that land other than build that uh fire station and the barracks. The barracks, um under a C two, they qualify as an approved special use, um or as a permissible special use under a special use permit for labor camps and which is a temporary permanent is defined under our uh under our ordinances to house the employees of an organization. And so that's how that was, that's why that characterization was placed with that, although formally, it's going to be a barracks. It's just semantics is just a different word for the same thing. And the city land that is sandwiched in between those two BLM zones, it is we're requesting to be rezoned from the R seven five to the C two. As Councilor Weisenberg said, um it has not been developed. It has been an R seven five for a long time. And there has been no interest in developing that by any outside resources at this point um in order to have continuity of the zoning. And it's really that just the the only consideration at this point right now. And in regard to zoning, the our ordinances also require if there if a commercial zone is next to residential, it does require a buffer landscaping. You can't just go right up next to residential. Does anybody have any questions about that? Oh, no. Yes, I do have more. I'm sorry. Got ahead of myself on the um zone change. So when there is a zone change, um and it goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission, there is a section in our ordinances, and I can't remember the exact number, but I can certainly get that for you quickly if you would so like. But what it states in summary is that upon, so the planning and zoning, also they advertise that there has been an application for a zone change, and it allows citizens to respond. And if there is a twenty percent of residents within the buffer zone, and a buffer zone is characterized as one hundred and forty feet from that property that is uh under application, protest to the application, then the Planning and Zoning Commission can still recommend it move forward to council. But in that event, council is required, um rather than uh council votes, which to normally pass is a majority of the quorum, it is three-quarters vote of council. In the situation with our council, there are seven seats on our council. Three-quarters of that number is five point two five counselors. So that's what it takes to pass a um a zone change under which there has been a legal protest. And to go back to define what a legal protest is, um so it's twenty percent. In this instance, there are twenty properties that surround that parcel of land. And so twenty percent of twenty is four. So there were four signatures and there were four, I think there were five signatures in regard to this protest. Um because otherwise, on the other side is BLM land on the other three sides. Did I cover that all correctly? Thank you. Um other update, one other um update is I have been working on the nuisance and abandoned vehicle ordinances to uh do some modifications as requested by council. And the objective is to streamline the process. So right now, as uh this is also piggybacking on earlier comments regarding nuisance properties, and there's one in particular um that has been discussed. The current situation with the the nuisance processes is it is, it is a very time-intensive process. There are several, um there, there are several appeal processes. There's a lot of timing uh constraints, so you can't just move through it quickly. Part of the, what we're doing now in regard to modifying the current nuisance and abandoned vehicle code is right now abandoned vehicles are included within the nuisance. We are moving them into the motor vehicle code, which is also how the state statutes handle it, several other municipalities. In regard to the nuisances, we are granted the authority by Wyoming statute to handle nuisances nuisances however we we want. So in order to also streamline the process, yet comply with any constitutional rights and requirements and due process requirements, but we are still looking to streamline the process. We had our initial uh work session yesterday, and it was actually very productive. Um I got a got a lot of good feedback from all of the relevant stakeholders. So we gathered the courts, the um uh code enforcement officers, the police department, fire officials, as well as building officials. And we also are looking to expand who can be a nuisance officer, because nuisances touch so many different areas of our ordinances. Does anybody have any questions?
Councilman Lemon.
Um I have one. So you were talking about uh the need of five votes. Is that for the BN, BLM land to change zones, the meeting that we're having next week? That will require five votes to pass?
No, not actually.
Discussing some other?
Right. So the BLM passed unanimously, um and there were no objections by the public nor of the planning and zoning members. So that one passed unanimously. That will just uh be approved, if approved by council, just by a majority of the quorum.
Okay, so.
The city parcel, that one, because there was a legal objection pursuant to our ordinances in how those are conducted, the council has to, in order to be approved, it has to pass by three-quarters of the council.
And that's not on the agenda yet.
No, not yet.
Okay.
And that is also required to have the fifteen days uh legal notice. And so that's already being publicized, and that will go on to the September agenda.
And you mentioned on the, for the BLM zone change, uh their plan is a a fire station, but you also mentioned um
A barracks.
Barracks. I gather that's for the firefighters, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not um just temporary housing, right? A man camp?
Uh well, no, it's not. It's not temporary housing. So their plan is to actually build a permanent foundation and have two eight-man buildings that will house their seasonal fire crew or other crew as needed.
It's not a temporary.
No, they're they're going to be permanent.
Good.
And they're actually on two separate parcels. And the reason for that is, my understanding, I'm sorry, I cannot speak for the BLM, but my understanding is that they have, um they separate the fire station from the barracks due to being able to allow the um the the crews to be able to rest and not be um in the middle of everything. So traditional fire stations often have the barracks right in the station. And this way, they can rotate crews and have different shifts.
Well, number of fires we're having, that would definitely be welcome to have additional firefighters.
Councilman Weisenberg, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I was just gonna touch base on this. Uh and and Panita, thank you. Uh I sit on the board, and that's what I mentioned earlier about barracks. It's, it is two separate facilities. Uh the fire station has to be uh separated. And this is per BLM. What they said at that meeting is it's required by their law, pretty much, because they have to be able to separate work from uh rest, right, and their employees. So you touched base on that. Um the the property where the barracks is is uh projected to be is on the northern side of the Higley Boulevard over there. The fire station is going to, is projected to be on the uh south side of that where their current little modular barracks are right now. So. And they said that they are gonna bring a a presentation here and show it all. So.
One other point, too, was that um seventy-five percent of the council is five point three, so it doesn't take five votes, take six.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just a tidbit.
Okay. Since we can't saw one of us in the fourth.
You what?
We can't saw one of us in a fourth?
Yeah. I won't, no.
My hand says yes, but the rest of my body says no.
Councilman Weisenberg.
No, a question on the the seven, uh the the seventy-five percent of council or three-quarters, however you wanna say it. Um what if not all seven council members can be present? Is it just three-quarters of the council members at that point in time that are present? Because we're, it's going to be a special meeting, and there's possibilities that not all individuals can make it.
Let me check.
That one's not gonna be a special.
Oh, no, that's not the special meeting. The special meeting just requires a majority of the quorum.
Oh, okay, just the city.
Because there was no, uh there was no protest.
Okay.
So the distinction, the difference between the two is, one, there's an, uh there was some public objection, the other one, there was no public objection. When there is an objection, there are additional procedures.
Sorry, I I got them mixed up. But even at a regular meeting, if not all seven individuals are here, what happens?
It has to be six.
It still has to be six. But let me check on this real quick.
The other, the other thing is, is the reason for the special meeting for BLM is just a timing situation, but that's not but that's not necessary for the city parcel.
Yeah. I was just getting them backwards. I just don't, I mean, like right now, we have five individuals sitting up here. How, how would that happen?
We don't vote.
It wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to vote on that, or.
So it just have to be tabled or postponed?
What the language says is that the amendment shall not become effective except by the favorable vote of three-fourths of all members of the legislative body of the municipality.
So if there was people missing, we could table it, postpone it, that sort of thing, so it doesn't just die?
Yes, that is an option.
Okay. Okay. Is that it?
Nothing further from me.
Okay, thank you. The next thing is direction from city council to city manager, does anybody have anything for Tom?
Has there been any?
Councilman Lumen, you have the floor.
Has there been any progress in finding a financial manager?
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Lumen, we have received two applications, and we plan on interviewing both of those candidates.
Okay, anything else? All right. So we will move on to unfinished business. This is an ordinance, and I would entertain a motion. Councilman, sorry.
I move to approve the second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, Registration under Section 5.08, Alcoholic Beverages, to add Section 508.5080, General Penalties for Violation.
Second. Been a motion made and seconded to approve the second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code Title V, Business Taxes, License and Registration under Section 5.08, Alcoholic Beverages, to add Section .508.580, General Penalties for Violations. Is there any discussion? And, Anita, I will have you explain this again, just for the people that are tuning in.
Certainly, thank you, Mayor. On, this is an ordinance, it is what it is doing is, the objective is to provide a mechanism for criminal enforcement of the portions of the alcohol code that do not specifically provide a penalty for violation. And this could include such things as failure to display the license, failure to obtain proper permits, something like maybe an open container violation for an event, or not getting a twenty-four hour catering permit when you're supposed to. In addition to other penalties, so this just gives some more discretion on how the alcohol code is enforced within our municipality.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Seeing none, open online voting, I see is open.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with five aces.
All right, thank you. Seeing that there's no new business, the next thing on our agenda is an executive session. Councilman Wells.
I move to enter into executive session at eight nineteen PM per Wyoming Statute sixteen four four oh five to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law to consider the selection of a site or the purchase of real estate when the public regarding the consideration would cause a likelihood of an increase in price.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to enter into executive session at eight nineteen PM. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with five aces.
All right, thank you. Got jacked up that fast, huh?
It's a big project.
It's such a big project. I mean, should I actually tackle that?
I always tell people every vote matters, whether it's primary or full election, or just a special election or district, whatever.
You're right.
Any can't smile yet.
Alan just checked.
Yeah, he's right there. He's been there all day. Let's go over.
We're just a good looking group that brought in here. These are brothers. Where'd you work? My brother's. He's ours. Please don't arrest my mom. I'm sorry, you said that parcel property is eighteen acres.
Nineteen.
Nineteen acres. Call, call me crazy person, obviously, but doesn't the fire department need an ability?
Everybody in Rollins needs to know what if BLM and the city took half sections of land and split the barracks and the fire station. You'd have more communication between BLM and the fire department. You'd have a unified station where those temporary workers can still come and go, and help the barracks. They could be on city land, they could unify some of that area around it to make those citizens happy.
Well.
It doesn't?
My placement of the station is more important. I mean, I, I get the concept, those kind of things, but it's.
It's just a wild thought, since a city property and people don't want stuff there, it sounds like built up crazy. If the fire department and city had a opportunity to make it look nice, but still useful.
It's a good idea.
It's just unfortunate that it's on the south side of town, it sounds like.
Well, I mean, it, would it, for them, it's, it's easy access for them to get right on the guy, rather than to go to the.
Which makes sense, but it doesn't put it in the middle of town for you guys, which is a hindrance.
That part of it, yeah.
That makes sense. That makes sense.
I'd like to have more equipment and firefighters filling it up.
Yeah. So the, the part that they're probably not telling you that's what I'm letting you have, like, even what the BLM currently is, this time of year, they're staffing it with maybe a group, and the rest of them are not coming what they're doing. In fact, they've had one BLM engineer here and an engineer of Cheyenne here, it's very, last couple weeks. We tried to fill that order, couldn't, between us and the fire district. Couldn't get enough people, qualified people in the right place and stuff.
It's not easy out here.
No, it's been, well, that, I'm, right now, I'm short two, I've got one in training in Cheyenne. I'm not even in an academy class, I have one just deployed with the military. So that puts me down, yeah, in all those kind of things. And I've got three guys, three of my current full-time staff, literally, one of them started on the twenty-second of July, so we don't have the training to get into that, it's just, it's just a certification. We're working on it.
There's a lot of that first thought. Dan's later probably. Is it gonna be a show meeting or what?
Yeah.
Sure.
Cause he's the only thing over, problem over. Oh, yeah, Canada, Canada's just, yeah. I know, I always, always reach out to the whole, the whole. I talked to a guy, he was a unionist, that shit I got, and he's just outside of, he's a quarterback, he's outside of the river, up there, he does that, it's just, it gets crazy, especially this time of year. For town food.
Yeah, it's crazy, I've been, it's, people love the shit out of that, it's great for the year.
Yeah, well, one is part of mother nature. It is part of mother nature in that.
There's a couple subs, get your drinks and chips and all that thing that consists.
Because society's become sophisticated, we can't get help, kind of, and we're down at the same time.
There's a problem. Actually, there's a lot of really good programs that.
I would assume a lot of it is people make fires and they don't have the same level of safety concepts that we used to.
Well, and it's interesting, this quarter, I just put on a big proportion, I mean, that they talked about, I mean, they're back in time, quite a ways, you know, a hundred years ago, and those kind of things. And how far is what they have now, well, unfortunately, unfortunately. No. In the early forties, fifties. Not realizing that you were going to comp out our problems in fifty years now, with all the overgrowth and the, the.
It's what I noticed.
The pipe beams come through.
Just don't, you know, you're making stuff, there's bad stuff.
It's, it's one of those life cycle things that when you have natural fire, it functions. There's a true cycle to it, it's kind of interesting how they don't work.
My favorite thing to ask you though was, show me somewhere the forest fire rage, where there's nothing growing. There's always something growing out.
Always, it always comes back. I mean, it takes time, but if you plant a tree in New York, it takes, you know.
How fast are you doing for? Takes years for us to get to, get to a certain point, but.
Like, you hear a girl about this, what's her name, I think?
Yeah, you gotta wonder sometimes about it. And I mean, everything grows a little differently, I got one to meet a plant that's like this big, and I got another one that I can't keep from the top of my greenhouse right now, cause it's going. And I mean, everything grows a little differently. I got one two meter plant that's like this big, and I've got another one that I can't keep from the top of my greenhouse right now, cause it's going out, so. But, uh, yeah, I, I, a part of it is people don't realize that it is a natural process. And I think another part is also that we haven't managed to undergrow out there enough.
Part of it too. And the fact that you're.
Cause I always.
We're taking building our houses right, you know, all these cool forests and trees, you know, on the edge of the hill, you can see a little, and where's the park come from?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we don't consider stuff like that, absolutely true. Well, hasn't the state, state seen more interstate turnover in the last ten years versus the ten years prior? Like significant overturning people coming in from other states?
I'm not sure.
I was, I was doing some, some number looking, and I could be wrong, I've looked at a lot of numbers, but I was doing some population numbers, job information, all sorts of stuff about it, and I, if I. What I was reading comes back to me probably here. What they were saying is states like ours, smaller states where there's less population and a lot of room, have seen an influx of out of state over the last ten years. A lot of the western states especially have seen an increase in population growth without it being like in-state growth. If that makes sense.
I think we're still behaving the way else because of our climate.
Well, yeah, most people can handle it.
I'm actually okay with it.
I, I just go scam it on that, I just, you know, people think I'm crazy, give me a show, I'll let me go, and I'm having fun all there along. Then again, I came here from Michigan and I love the sport of hockey, so, I mean, I play on frozen water. I love the cold. I had no problem with it, you can always put more on, you can't take enough off.
I agree with you, we are, it's a little too, too warm this week for me.
I heard a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that was too bad, too much.
Cause I couldn't even get out there and harvest some eggs, it was so hot out in my greenhouse, it was just, like, I walked in there and I, I was probably watering plants with my body, it was so ridiculous.
What part of Michigan?
Uh, Forts area, Sports Creek specifically. Born in Dearborn. My dad, uh, ran Bennigan's in the area, and ended up moving us up to the Flint area when he became the GM, their store up there.
Are they still around?
Not.
Every day, that's three days, teaching on Fridays.
Yeah, I went back, a lot of struggles. They were going the wrong way back then from my father's perspective, so.
And the, the market got flooded with a lot of those type of restaurants.
They started popping up, you know? You know?
And they seem to be going there.
It, it's, it's the same as every trend we ever see through any agency. I mean, look at, look at now with, uh, convenience stores, they're going away, the internet's crushing them, cause you can't compete with on-demand from anywhere you want for a small fee. Global businesses are, are struggling everywhere, not, not just here, but everywhere. Um, if you guys watched the DNC at all, that was quite an interesting one.
Show.
I kept calling to the concert, cause I'm pretty sure they played more music than we talked. It was interesting. I mean, the art scene wasn't much better, they, they did a lot of terror in for City One Two. I just wanna see people be able to live freely again.
That would be nice.
It's one of my biggest things is I just wanna see people live freely in their pursuit of peace, liberty, happiness, so long as they're not harming, injuring, or oppressing each other. And I chose those words very specifically. And I know it's an add-on to the saying, but we also have to remember that moral value is what dictated humanity for a long time, if we lose morality. We're not, uh, we're not decent humans.
True.
And that's actually what brings me up here. Is just to learn, watch, observe, and see where I can try to help. Change things or discuss things or. What?
What does it mean?
Like your, your staff and their pay situation.
It's not good.
No, you're fifteen to twenty percent underpaid across, or versus the rest of the country in state averages from my gathering. Yeah, that's not good. And with this town not having a draw, cause there's no major draw, it takes a very certain kind of person that won't be out here. I know, cause I stayed and my ex-wife left. She didn't wanna be out here, she didn't like the small town, she didn't like, and some people don't.
No, it's not for everything. Well, I'd like to win, or you like to win your life, but.
Yeah. Yeah, that is a pay war. That is definitely a pay war. I've got an idea about that, this message too.
It's a big, um.
Well, it is. I could probably tell you that if you walked in my yard right now, you'd make a complete double one then. And I can, I can almost guarantee it, cause I'm pretty sure I'm probably in violation of city ordinance, but I started a garden, so I've got a little pile, a little crap that I've been slowly polishing down. Stirring, managing, I killed a lone rodent to try to make home there. So I'm managing that, but it's technically a violation of city ordinance.
We have bigger fish in front of us.
That's, and see, my concern is about that, it's not that I'm trying to make a mess, I'm trying to break this down so that I can put in my garden, which is, next year it won't be there. That's kind of my thing, it's outside of the sense too, this is kind of my shit, I didn't, I didn't want any problems.
I don't think, I don't think it'll be on our radar.
Well, that won't be, I'm. I am here, one guy in town that actually smokes the medical CBG cannabis. So I learned about the radar at some point, I'm sure. But I believe it all. I keep it out of sight of any children that don't believe they should see it, I believe that's an absolute no-no, and I've got, you know, kids on both sides, I do not do it either. Don't believe it. And at the same time, it's not out of the chain. I use it as a pain reliever, an antidepressant alternative, you know? And it helps me stop smoking tobacco, smoking drugs. It's an anxiety, anxiety rapper. It's a weird thing. I'm the only one, cause the people that will run the store are told, you're the only one running the stuff. Ah, which kind of stuff on the island business.
Oh, was that the, where, was that one?
Uh, the old Palma building.
So the glass, the glass place?
Yeah. Yeah, same, same building in there.
I thought that the, uh, guy who owns the building bought the shop. Did it close up?
As far as I know, that shop closed a while ago.
Have planes ever gone?
Uh, no, 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 it was, um, Plata.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
I know that the guy who owns the building bought the shop. It could be closer, the.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear about that, I just heard they were closing the building, or the business there in the building section.
Might have, but it could just be that the old owner sold it and he got all that good spin on it.
Switching it on. Well, check. See if he's got some of the actual non, non psychoactive stuff. Yeah, I, like, I, I'd be curious to see what this house is, and I know you guys probably there in a lot of the large generation, it makes sense.
Well, we wouldn't be able to specifically drive the company.
You know, you also said that maybe he's assistance. So I might have to have a discussion with the city manager about volunteering some time if necessary, cause I have time. I have disability, I can't work crazy hard and fast like I used to, but I have time.
And I'm not familiar with the owners, um, I haven't even seen the property myself.
Again, I don't know the situation either, I just know that. What was it we were saying, if everybody in town could just help each other, we'd all do real well? Or at least get by?
Or do better.
Yeah, I was, I was checking those numbers, seeing that, that underpay thing.
Yeah, wait, what's, it's current. What, what?
I, the one I saw was twenty twenty-two numbers, I wanna say.
They've all changed, the last year, a lot of the jurisdictions in Brooklyn have risen, started paying their police or deputies, uh, because of these reasons again.
Yeah, you, well, again, they, the town either needs a draw, which I think if, if they looked, they could find one. We're on I- eight. There's gotta be a way to bring something here, they would.
Oh, looking at your business, that's it.
Something larger that would bring attention. Make people on the highway go, hey, look at this place, let's stop for it. And. There's, there's been expansion in the last couple of years, I moved out here back in Ohio. And for the first couple of years there, there was nothing, it was like there was no growth, there was, maybe within that wall now. So. I, it's. It's grown since then a little, but those first couple of years, it seemed like, the feeling I got was. The small town that wanted to stay small for the sake of having that small community feel. The problem that I see with it is no small town ever stays small, it doesn't, they all grow or they bust. And I can prove that with the state of Michigan, cause there are towns that made it and grew massive, and there are towns that were in spots that those towns now cover, that don't exist. So. No, I just, I, I don't, I don't think it's true, but a draw or a raise would definitely help in that field. Because according to the twenty twenty-two numbers, everyone you remember, everyone of your staff was fifteen to twenty percent under the national slash state averages, as far as I can find.
It's worse than that.
I believe it, which is why I'm concerned with things that I've seen. You know, I, I understand, um, a couple of meetings ago, the low housing project here, I understand people do housing, it sounds like a righteous cause, but what's the revenue from it gonna be? Is it gonna even cover, the actual tax revenue from it, is it gonna cover what they waived the fee of? Is it gonna cover that difference? Is it gonna grow, be, make money beyond that number even? Is this an investment that's making money for the town? And, and not every investment's going to, again, it sounds like a good cause, I understand their stuff's running down, it sounds a bit. But at the same time, we gotta look out for the town as a whole and try to grow, cause every other town in the state is growing. You go up to Casper, they've got blocks being built. They don't have like eighty.
No, but they do have twenty-five.
But twenty-five doesn't run across country, it runs more south. So people going across country aren't driving twenty-five. Twenty-five is a seasonally, seasonary migration pattern for people that are able to afford it, and a, yeah, that's probably the weak habit to travel for people who wanna go on a trip. They go north, they get cold, they go home. Or from here, they go south, they get warm, they come home. But there's no draw to get people to stop here.
No, other than the fact it's an hour and a half in the direction to this.
Try driving to Walmart with that. That was rough back in the day. The, the local city market here has never been bad or anything, but sometimes you want options. And to not have options either. Thank you, so, and they had to fight to get in here, I remember that, that was a push for them to even get that store put up where they got it. And that's a draw, honestly, that gets people to stop off the highway, they, again, like you said, hour and a half in the direction, ah, well, I want something quick, let's hit Walmart real fast, do a little shopping. It's a draw, it gets people to stop at the exit. I, again, I don't know what the answer would be, I don't know, I'm not a business expert. My expertise in stuff like this is making sure that my, my, my little villages and cities and video games are floating and happy. That's my expertise, I got nothing, no knowledge of the end up stuff, but. The basics of a draw to make a town grow are the same either way. I, the fine details are different, but all ones need to draw. It needs something to bring people here to get them to stop, to get them to, to stop being here and going, hey, let's go to Roxbury's, or Casper, or Cheyenne, or. Take true. Of course, that's where the council is supposed to be. I'm a smart guy, it's okay, everybody be talking about that. I, I, I came to surgery, and because honestly, and I see a lot of people talking about things that are wrong, but no way. There's a lot of, oh, it's broken and it needs fixed, okay, what are you doing to try to help this? So I just started coming up here.
How long you been with the pen?
Six and a half years, six years actual, the last half I was on short-term disability for my lovely divorce that I.
Sorry.
It happens, long time ago, I'm over it now, like us, there's some guys that don't make it through it. It happens, it's, again, part of some people like it out here, some people don't. I loved everything except for the six foot semester room, two years ago, that was awful.
That was rough.
I literally had to go out the back door of the trailer I was in at the time, go around the trailer and do eight feet of snow from front of the trailer, so that the trailer front door came out. That was a bad one. And what really got me is I could see grass over the yard, and I was like, this is Wyoming's killing me with this, Michigan be like, we have two feet of snow, and everybody be out there going, yeah, it's all snow, woo, woo. No, I only know the wind out here's just gonna make it just basically dirt mound until it feels like we hit it.
I don't have Facebook.
Smart man.
I'm pretty good, I use them though.
They've been doing this for a.
So they've got a plan.
Yeah, yeah, so, but they have.
I don't worry about it.
They have public green spaces.
Hmm, you have the right space.
Um, and they still don't love it.
Yeah.
But please though. Um, but yeah, they have long tracks of green spaces where people can do this.
This is very different, it's a different geographic.
Talking of working, she, that was one of the ones. They have it so that citizens can do their sort of wireless, and the chief told me that they have people shooting into Georgia yards, across the Georgia yards, shooting through people's yards. And it seems like a lot of us are just waiting for somebody to get that back.
There it says.
That was really good. And then another town I talked to, and none of these chiefs I talked to, they're all like, I'm just, I'm just, I shouldn't have, this wasn't. Another town.
I said five years ago was a bad time to start to be a cop. It'll affect you, the department, of course. But I think five years ago, heat was prolonged. It's probably worse now. It's probably more dangerous.
What was five years ago?
Right before Trump, like. We had summer law, all that crazy must go on before that. How was that after? That was after. No, no, we had the summer law right before that. Yeah. And I was just like, it's a really bad time to go try to be a police officer right now because it's dangerous.
It's been pretty bad for about ten years or so.
Like, like I said, I did the corrections. I'm a former US Army. Done with that. I can't do anything because I've changed that. I've learned that.
Help us out here.
I'm working on it. I'm just a slow process. Mainly because I'd be the crazy guy trying to do it. That would be exactly what every, everybody always tells me, if you're ever in a rush with politics, you gotta be aware of your fear. My fear is, I'm the crazy guy who went through a mental breakdown over a divorce. Wouldn't you go through a mental breakdown if your kids were taken out of your house? Supposed to come back in a month, never returned, and then all of a sudden you were being charged out of court six months later. I went through a mental break. I thought about all this live on air online. I'm not concerned about any of it. I appreciate it. I have no problem with people knowing, Mike. Because like I said, I just gotta wanna see everybody be free. That's where I'm at. I love, I'm just streaming a lot actually. A lot of social influence. Think about getting back in a little bit actually. What's that? Social media stuff again. Let's tell the waters to trip.
Yeah, I don't have any of that, uh. Never had Facebook.
I had it for a while. I never found now a bag. See this. Yeah, I, I never found Facebook in my life.
At least that one.
Uh, local, so where are you? Do you know when the elections are gonna happen?
Not sure.
I was looking, you know, the.
Well, not the states, hopefully not.
Kind of clerk's website, election tab, click on that, it was really good. So what's that? Things got mucho, I guess.
I buy.
But, I'm, like, it's not like Walmart doesn't do this.
Yeah, that's the place.
Keep doing it.
What?
Holy cow.
I haven't seen the, the drawers. That's the only one I've seen.
Okay, refresh.
Refresh?
Are you just gonna?
Mine's been.
Oh, thanks, Chris. It's still good.
Councilman Weisenberg.
I move to come out of executive session per Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five at nine o'clock PM.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to come out of executive session per Wyoming statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five at nine PM. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Okay, thank you. Chris, uh, Councilman Weisenberg, sorry.
I'd move to authorize.
Can we hold on one second? I still am waiting for one council member to vote. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with five days. Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilman Weisenberg.
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations on a purchase of real estate property.
Second.
Your second. Been a motion made and seconded to authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations on the purchase of real estate. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, um.
Please.
Do you want me to wait a minute, Lynn, or?
Okay, you'll have to because it's not, um, in board dock. You'll have to make it as, um.
A voice, wait. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And if you need the wording, I've got it right here, Lynn.
Great.
Next thing on our agenda is, uh, minutes, executive session minutes. Councilman Garner.
I'm going to approve the executive session minutes of July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed. A motion passes with five days.
All right. Is there anything else that needs to come before this body tonight? Seeing none, uh, this, I will adjourn this meeting at whatever time it is and. What time is it?
Nine oh three.
Nine oh three. And our next meeting is August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, special council meeting at eleven AM.
Have a good night, guys.
That, uh. Hey, Jackie. That, you know, you're talk, or you guys were talking about for the property? Is it the one you boarded on to me that I did not receive?
Nope, it's a new one from the same guy though.
Same guy, same.
Never received it.
It's the same property.
Same property.
Never received it.
You didn't?
No.